This meeting is being recorded. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to our public, which is states, one nation, and for all.
Do we have any commendations?
I have one. Now that we got the roof contract approved by the select board and everybody. I'd like to commend Ralph Wallace, Mark Leedman, Brian Seraphin, Karima Maloney, Sam Alterner, and our own Mike Pepperling for their help getting that contract. Signed and agreed to, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with them to complete this project.
Okay, back here, Henry, any others? Okay, we'll move on to public comment. I assume that's for public comment, but okay. I just want to remind everyone that we have a policy that allows individuals up to three minutes to present their materials. And the overall segment should not exceed fifteen minutes. If you would like to submit a comment that that does not fit within those guidelines or timeline, you could submit them via email to us. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals in the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. For example, budgets, superintendent performance, and school policy. I will give individuals a fifteen second prompt to let them know that their time is expired. Is everyone signed? Anyone who wants to make a comment? Reese?
Yeah, that's. Hi, everybody. My name is Reese Dahlberg. I live on Field Brook Road. I'm a parent, co-president of the NVMS PCO, and I'm also a member of the Marblehead Task Force Against Discrimination. I wanted to come here tonight to publicly thank the NVMS English teachers, the Vets Principal, Matt Lavandji, the Marvelhead Public School Administration, with the support of a wonderful event that happened in the days before Thanksgiving. First little backstory, as you may be aware, we recently welcomed author Alice Hoffman to speak about her young adult novel, When We Flew Away. This is a fictional account of Anne Frank from the time before her family was forced into hiding in Nazi occupied Netherlands. In the weeks prior to the author visit, I was able to collaborate with different groups from the Marblehead community to plan an intergenerational book discussion. The Tuesday before Thanksgiving, NVMS staff, thirty-three NVMS students, community members made up of votes from the Council on Aging, Task Force Against Discrimination, and beyond came together at the Abbott Public Library. The incredible vets English teachers Caroline Todd, Brigitte Carnes, Jim Shaffnet, Ryan Judkins, David Barker, and the Vets Librarian Katrina Donovan led small groups consisting of both students and community members. They discussed When We Flew Away and enjoyed lunch provided by the NVMS PCO. It was incredible to see such engaged discussion between students and community members. Thank you to all involved. It was a great way to move into the Thanksgiving holiday. Thanks, everybody.
Sarah?
Hello, Sarah Fox, forty-sixth East Street. Thank you, Henry, for your update on the roof and your work you've been doing on the savings judge committee. That's been great. Thank you. I wanted to talk about the announcement to change the start times. That's something that was bargained. Part of the compensation package was everything's a give and take, as you know, in bargaining, or it seems you don't know. And that was part of that. Why we were able to make the leverage, we were getting extra learning, time on learning for our students, because we've heard how important that is. Now, to mention the end time of two thirty-seven is something that's been embedded in our contract for many, many, many iterations of the top contract going back ten, twenty years. So there was no public vote to reopen bargaining. So what you did by doing that was a breach of mass general law. You have to open bargaining, you have to take a vote to open bargaining in public session. By doing what you did, you basically put a huge dark cloak over the public business of this town. Also, by cutting twelve hours of learning at the high school or twelve minutes a day over a hundred and eighty days, that's thirty-six hours of learning you took away from our students. Your job is to provide time on learning to our students. That's over five days. When you have a student sitting for an AP exam who's starting later in the year than the southern schools but are being graded against those schools as well, you just robbed another five plus days from those students. Not to mention, each day is roughly worth point five-five percent of compensation. You gave the entire staff over a three percent increase in one fell swoop by making that decision, all without doing it in public or notifying anyone who'd reopen bargaining. Considering some of you are sitting here after having been supported either in like-kind donations or actual donations by the union to then make such a large increase is a massive ethics violation as well. So now, not only have you breached mass general law, you've reached mass ethics law. And on top of that, you have put our town, who's in a very precarious financial situation, into a situation where the public is now going to ask, do we trust these people? These schools need to stay solvent. We need people to trust you more than ever. And by doing this under the dark of night, you now have spent over five hundred thousand dollars in taxpayer money alone on that one decision without ever letting the taxpayers know what you're doing. If I hadn't sat in and known exactly what went into that and how much the calculations are per day, per minute, and such, I might not notice it here and do that those calculations. That is egregious that you did not let the community know that you were bargaining again. You were put here by the union largely, and you have reopened bargaining without ever telling people you did so. The only way to start, change start and end times is to change the contract. So there is no way that you have changed the start and end time without reopening bargaining. There was also no vote ever to assign anybody to be able to bargain. So either you were meeting unposted as a quorum of five, or some of you elected yourselves to speak for an entire town without ever a vote assigning you to do such a task. Talk about bad governance. That's no governance.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Karen, can you hear me? Hear me? I believe you have your your hand raised to speak a public comment.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, school committee members. I understand that you will be meeting later today in executive session to discuss a grievance filed by a teacher. This teacher, who served as the lead teacher for over ten years, was removed from that position approximately one month after speaking out about antisemitism in our schools.
Karen, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you just state your full name and address, please?
My name is Karen Talmachliff, eleven Trager Road.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. Please, please continue.
Our district encourages students to be upstanders and to speak out against injustice and bullying. Yet what happened to this teacher represents a clear injustice. She appears to have been retaliated against for exposing Jew hatred in Marblehead Public Schools. Removing her from the lead teacher position seems intended as punitive measure and as an intimidation tactic. Now, other teachers, administrators, and students are aware of the consequences faced by those who speak out against antisemitism. They risk being punished. This teacher has correctly filed a grievance with the district. I strongly urge the school committee to review her grievance thoroughly and fairly. reinstatement is warranted, as what occurred was unacceptable and sets a dangerous precedent. The resolution you reach will signal to all staff whether our schools truly support those who courageously speak out against hatred. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Karen. I am not seeing any other hands, so we will close public comment and move on to our student representative, Will. What do you have for us tonight, Will?
Thank you, everyone. I hope Thanksgiving break went well. Here at the high school, a Thanksgiving Day, Thanksgiving Day game. Football team beat Swamp Scott in epic fashion. They won the game on the final drive after being down by one point. An instant classic. Congrats to all players. This week also marked the beginning of winter sports. Good luck to all athletes in the first week of practice. Games will begin for most next week. Last week, we had our acapella, acapella groups had their sing free concert featuring all of our acapella groups as well as the middle school eighth grade Lumetones. Luminescence sang Man Eater, Pretty Hurts, Wanna Be, and May I Suggest, their alumni song. The Grizzlies sang Candy and Goodbye, their alumni song. The Jewel Tones sang First Light, Where Have You Been, and Cecilia, an alumni song. And the Lumetones, the eighth grade combined with the high school Luminescence group, sang Mercy and Shut Up and Dance. It was a really cool concert. My sister was in it for the eighth grade thing, and it was pretty cool to see them bring up their alumni onto the stage, so that was really cool. Also, other news, MHS switched back to our old schedule, beginning at seven fifty-five and ending at two thirty. This change has been pretty fluid and much appreciated by both students and staff alike. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. We'll move on to the superintendent update.
Thanks, Chairman. Good evening. It's December already. It's a short but busy monthly up to the winter break. For starters, I wanted to briefly talk about the information from Governor Healy's office regarding the graduation framework. This framework is a culmination of ongoing discussion and work across the Commonwealth subsequent to the tenth grade MCAS no longer being a part of students competency determination for attainment of a high school diploma. At this juncture, there is no action to be taken by superintendents or school committees that needs work yet, because it's a preliminary proposed course of action. And the highlights of what is likely to be finalized in June are as follows. They're looking to do end of course assessments in course subject areas designed and scored by the state. They want to make sure that we have implementation of MYCAP, which is Career and Academic Plan, by having either a capstone project or portfolio in place, having students complete the FAFSA slash MAFSA, developing financial literacy skills, and the option to earn seals of distinction like the C of Literacy, and then looking at other seals that might make sense. All these will dovetail with our rigorous programs of study. The good news is that we have mostly these components in place already at high school. So that's good. Let's just be a little bit of pivoting once they come up with some finalized, you know, course of action. Superintendent met with the commissioner and the secretary of education yesterday to share thoughts and ideas about what the final framework would look like. There'll be many more discussions, but I don't want to at least touch on that topic tonight. Let's see, Assistant Superintendent Pfefferling had a kickoff meeting with the roof contractors this morning. And I just wanted to share that just some of the conversation Mike had, this, you know, obviously is being discussed further in some community meetings, but I just wanted to share because I thought this was great information.
This is the high school.
The high school, yes. They're exploring the idea of beginning the work on the library, and they're joining roof portion, portion of the roof over April vacation. These portions are shingled, and they feel as though, as though they can get that done over the April break as long as the weather is cooperating with us. So I thought that was, you know, good information, and that'll get us a little leg up on the, I think, overall with the project, if that comes from question, but obviously they gotta look. You gotta see is the weather gonna be cooperative? If so, they're gonna get, they're not gonna do it or work on it. Get started if, if the weather doesn't look like it's gonna quality. So that was just some information, but again, that's, that's gonna be a bigger, bigger discussions when we have more roof discussions right about to share that. Casey Johnson, our Metco director, coordinated a district visit with the new Metco president, Dr. Candace Sumner, yesterday. They met with students and Principal Carson here at the high school, and Dr. Sumner was very impressed by the students' insights, advocacy, and passion. I want to thank Asia for getting folks together after the school visit to discuss the program and ways that it can be supported. We invited Assistant Superintendent Ferrera, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Schmeckper, Representative Armin, along with Lou Meyer and Cindy Lowen, members of the Marblehead racial justice team for our meeting rate over at Central Office. It was such a refreshing and pivotal discussion of our different perspectives were shared. I thought it was a great way for Dr. Sumner to learn about Marblehead. She was wholly impressed by our time here and was very thankful to Katie for ordering lunch from the Rias, and she requested a repeat when she goes back to district. She was very loved the empanadas, anyways. She was very excited about that. And I'm really excited about Dr. Sumner. She seems in tune. She's vibrant. She's, she's doing a thirty-three district tour. She's touring all the Metco districts and just getting a beat, and she's like, so far Marblehead's her favorite spot. So I said, it's ours too, so I thought that was amazing. The tree lighting and holiday walk of this weekend, and the Marblehead children's chorus, featuring our second and third graders from Waverham Brown, will be showcased in the National Grand Bank parking lot on a Friday night at six thirty before they're illuminated tree. And I believe again on Saturday at the community center, too, is what I saw. So that's exciting stuff. We had our anti-discrimination committee meeting today, where we discussed Holocaust remembrance and things we're gonna kind of look to do. And in January for that, we discussed the Commission on Combating Antisemitism Report, and you know, we have talked about this a little bit, but some of the report indicates, you know, Desi should do this, Desi should do that, and also things around what school districts should do. And a lot of the discussion we're already kind of having some place around, you know, counseling, making sure that we're talking about anti-discrimination. There also have a lens for the antisemitism, and we're looking at curriculum, making sure that we have a lens of not just discrimination, anti-bias, but in regard to antisemitism. So all those things are kind of, you know, already, you know, culminating. We also talked about, I talked about my meeting with the Marblehead Ministerial Association, which were very enlightening. I met with all the faith leaders in town. And I shared that with that committee because I felt it was a great way to kind of get different perspectives from differing faith leaders in town. I thought that was awesome. We also talked about reporting mechanisms for reporting discrimination. And I shared the discussion we have with high school students and their thoughts on discrimination. Overall, it was a positive meeting, you know, we continue to explore ways to address discrimination in all its forms. We, we talked a little bit more about, you know, for that Holocaust remembrance, you know, partnering with Lappin Foundation around this film that they think would be good for us to show the students. There was a PD opportunity that came out today that I shared with the principals around. I think it's entitled, What Happens When Swastika Shows Up At Your School? So it's, it's really speaking to that. So some really solid things going on, so I just wanted to share that brief update. I just mentioned my meeting with students, and I want to share how impressed I am with the conversations that I've recently had with the high school students. Dr. Carlson and I met with students who have formed the MAGIC Coalition. We talked a little bit about this, but MAGIC stands for Marblehead Alliance for Growth, Inclusion, and Connection. I think it's awesome. Students have some great ideas and are leveraging student groups within the high school to start doing some student-led work around discrimination. And I, I met with them, and Dr. Carlson already, already met with them once, and then the members that kind of started the coalition. There was other, other students who wanted to say, hey, what, how can we learn more? So they were invited in. And I was a communicator, that was a conversation I was in, so I think it was a ten or eleven students. And did a really nice job explaining, like, here's what we're thinking about doing. We want to do student-led discussions. We want to talk to our peers. We want to eventually go down and talk to the younger students about discrimination, why it's, well, I think, you know, X, Y, and Z is not a good thing. So all good, positive stuff, and I was really impressed with the way they were passionate and articulate, and it was just really cool stuff. So we did that, and then we talked about ways that this is, you know, civic mindedness and, you know, provision for a sense of belonging. And I'm really excited to continue those conversations and really hear from the students. So this is, you know, we've been talking about student voice. We've been talking about how do we get students to tell us what they need, what they want, what they, what we work for them. And this was just, you know, prime example of that. So very excited about that. The other group of students I met with, with KJ Johnson, and we met just before Thanksgiving, and then we met again on Tuesday, and Dr. Carlson joined that conversation as well. Again, the students were, in the initial meeting, there was, I think, sixteen or seventeen students of color. And then the second one was, I think, eight or nine, so it was a little bit less, but really, the conversation was around how they felt like they, you know, they want to be heard and seen and respected and felt like that that was lacking, you know, component of the culture here at the high school, which I, you know, I would concur with that. And they really talked about, you know, in a respectful, polite way, they're working with me on creating a message of positivity to kind of really replace the Black Lives Matter politicized ban that was taken down. And so they had some really good ideas around that. We had some conversations. So I'm really excited about that advocacy, and I'll share the rendering with the committee that, you know, it's a message of positivity, so we can move forward that, but I'll share with the committee just so, you know, before we go hanging it up, you guys have not enough progressions involved. Yeah, so when, when we read the, when we read the flag policy, it's around messages of positivities you know, on that, if it's not politicized or, you know, activist ban or something like that. So, but I'm, I'm gonna share a rendering page, so I don't want any surprises. I don't want, you know, I think it's a good way to have a communication in, in a really, the students are really, you know, they're, they're really passionate, and they were really polite, and they were just advocated, and just, I'm just, I'm totally impressed with how, how the how the conversation went. So I just wanted to share that with you as well. And finally, here's this week's shout-outs. So from, I'm gonna do some shout-outs from the administrative team, Matt Lavandji, principal of Veterans Middle School. Shouts out to Shannon Abel and Jen Bator, the counselors at the middle school. Shannon and Jen do a truly fabulous job supporting our students across a wide range of needs. They consistently go above and beyond for both students and staff, always willing to step in, lend a hand, and provide guidance whenever it's needed. The calm, caring demeanor helps make the middle school a place where every student feels welcome, supported, and heard. We are incredibly grateful for all they do for our school community. He also shouts out to Tracy Mag and Phil Witt, the permanent substitutes at, at the middle school. Tracy and Phil are an incredible asset to this middle school community, consistently stepping in for teachers when they are out and ensuring continuity for our students. Their presence helps maintain a stable and supportive learning environment, and their willingness to assist wherever needed is truly appreciated. Kind, caring, and deeply committed Tracy and Phil demonstrate every day how much they value and support all of our students at the middle school. We are grateful for all that they do. From Scott Williams, principal of Village Elementary School, I would like to recognize our incredible nurses, Deb Pillen, and Beth Stan of it, Stan. Practiced it. I did, I practiced it. They keep us healthy at Village every day and a very, with a very busy office at all times, and I witness that, and you know, it's, it's fun to watch the kids going, it's, it's always busy at the nurse's office and all schools. So whether it's medications we need, Band-Aids, or caring for injuries sustained on the playground, they are always there supporting us all. They work well with Village students, parents, and staff, always approachable and helping keep our children at the center of their day. We are lucky to have these dedicated medical professionals at our schools keeping all the Village ducks healthy. I share Michelle Carlson. Sorry, she texted me hers. Second, there are communities. Let's see. Michelle Carlson, principal at high school, says she would like to recognize four incredible people who keep Marblehead High School running smoothly every day, every single day. Carrie Wright, Gilf Jim, Linda Cosmar, Loretta Brennan, and Peg Slattery. These four amazing secretaries are the, are the heart of MHS. They are friendly voices who greet families, the steady hands to solve problems before anyone else even knows they exist, and trust, trust, and, and the trusted support systems for students, teachers, and administrators alike. Whether it's organizing, guiding, troubleshooting, or simply offering a kind word at the right moment, they do it all with patience, professionalism, and a smile. And I can attest that I've been at the high school a lot, Landy, and it's, it's been a, been a really pleasant place to be in front of office. What was there? Frank Kowalski, principal of Glover Elementary. He likes to shout out to his support staff, Liz Cofflin, Jenna Rowe, and Barbara Rosenberg. Liz is such an asset to Glover. Not only is she fabulous literacy instructor, but Liz also began the year filling in as his second grade, as one of the second grade teachers. She takes initiative and helps with lunch coverage, recess, and does anything asked, always with a smile. Jenna is such a great addition to Glover. She's a fantastic literacy instructor. She is always asking to help and is such a kind and positive person. She helps at lunch and recess and is so student-driven. She always goes above and beyond. And Barbara is such a joy to have at Glover. She's friendly and such an amazing literacy instructor. She continuously checks into the office looking for ways to support students in the school. So that is awesome. And then finally, from Julia Ferrera, Assistant Superintendent Teaching and Learning. Julie says, thank you to our third grade teachers and the Kimberly Grad, Director of Abbott Public Library, for collaborating to engage our students in this year's Caldecott Book Award selection process. Miss Brad was appointed to this year's National Caldecott Award Selection Committee, which will select the most distinguished American picture book for children in the year twenty, in the early twenty twenty-six. Miss Grad is visiting all three third grade classes to read newly released picture books and lead discussions about each book's illustrations. These visits are going exceptionally well and are a wonderful example of school community collaboration in action. Thank you all. You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, since it's the first meeting of the month, we'll do an update from our assistant superintendent, Michael Floyd.
Well, thank you very much. There is very little to report this month. The finance report is in your packet.
I didn't see one, so.
Memo of the school, it was memo.
It was, it was a scheduled bill, so I didn't.
It's called eleven thirty twenty twenty-five budget memo to school committee.
You did?
Yeah. I'll, I'll give you the highlights of it. So the, the unexpended balance went down by sixty-five thousand dollars over the one month period. So we went from three point three four million unexpended down to three point two seven million unexpended. So what that kind of tells me is that we're, we've encumbered salaries very accurately, probably to a ninety-nine percent accuracy level. When we're working in two systems and Soft Right doesn't encumber salaries automatically for you, and we're not doing payroll in Munis yet. We have to do the workaround, and to me, that, that just says that we were able to make some really good using data, some good encumbrances on the salary lines. I know at the last meeting, there were, the last time we reported, there was some question around the Student Services Director, Assistant Director, Assistant Superintendent, sorry, Assistant Director. I have straightened that out. It's reflected in the reports now. And we will also reflect that with budget, with expenditure transfers between Munis and Soft Right. So we will get that straightened out, but in your reports, I did have it straightened out, and I have noticed that what needs to happen on the backend. So that, that's been taken care of. And then finally, I just want to just bring to your attention that there's a budget line of negative two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in the budget. And that is to, when we built the budget last year, we put in a line as a negative because we know that, that we're gonna have staff who are gonna retire. And instead of trying to identify each individual staff who's a member who's gonna retire or who has retired, or, you know, at least for other reasons, we put a negative in the budget. I, I know at some point, probably after we convert to Munis, need to distribute that negative just budget money. It's not expended. It's not encumbered. It's just budgeted side over some other lines. And it's my understanding that because we're living between salary lines and salary lines, it will not require a school committee approval for a budget transfer. Is that accurate? Thank you very much. As I said, the reports are there. Everything looks healthy and, and, and good from our standpoint right now for this year.
And I think the second part, we just, we just wanted to kind of bring up, like, where we are in the budget process, so we've met, just, just in high, high level stuff, so we've met as a budget subcommittee several times. And we set a schedule of events going through. And we talked, we can talk more in general. I just think, I think it was important, just as part of the budget over, over activities. We've met with a budget subcommittee, finance and budget subcommittee. I've met a couple of times. We have just a budget subcommittee. We're gonna come back. We're, we're meeting with all the principals. So it's Mike, Julia, Jason, myself, and each one of the principals, we're meeting to go through their schools, the staffing, their resources, et cetera, et cetera, to get their input as part of the budget process. So I just want to share that we're, we're in the middle of doing that. We're gonna come back to the budget subcommittee, and we have a couple of dates on the calendar, and then there's a schedule of events that we've kind of, you know, we can talk about budget subcommittee reports or whatever, but we have, we have a plan to come to before the school committee, before the public hearing. For a thing, hopefully we get all those dates spread away, and I'll share that, tell if you share the document yet, but there's, we, there's one working project. So I just thought it was important to kind of share at a high level, not, not about, bottom on the budget subcommittee, because that's a subcommittee discussion, but just in general that we're moving forward. I think we're in, we're having some good conversations. The principals have been really helpful in kind of sitting through staffing in the buildings and things like that, and just kind of looking at efficiencies, that's really where we are at this point. And then once we kind of get some, you know, more information collected together, we bring it, we'll bring it to the budget, yeah, budget presentation when it comes off on account. So just thought I'd share that at this point. Sorry, can you take your.
Anything else? It wasn't planned on mentioning it, okay? Thank you. I appreciate it.
I do think they have to.
I thought we've got so many meetings and we've had these conversations, but not with the full committee, so I apologize. I, I feel like briefly.
I'll give the update for the, I don't know if the list is coming down, but I'll give, not all the update. But the budget subcommittee, I do think we just need to make sure, and we go back and look at that, that the there's no question that we release the document at the time that we release it to the committee. We don't delay releasing documents, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the count, the, the tentative calendar indicate, I think it was a date in January, so that for the, or February for the presentation to the school committee, and that the next day we would release that presentation document. So we, at least it's not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Generally, it's, yeah, generally, you know, I think, I think that was just for making sure.
I'm just used to being done at ten o'clock at night and then talk by the next morning. Just, you know. Yeah, if you'd like it up as we're presenting.
It would, because it would just like, all of our documents go up when start our meeting. Just, we need to make sure that's, that's where, in the spirit of transparency that everyone talks about. We wouldn't be presenting a document, talking about a document, particularly about the budget, that the audience doesn't.
Right, okay, okay, that's what you're saying. Yep. So, yeah, we'll make sure that's reflected on the is being developed. I think that's all it did. Have any else?
No, that's all. All right, very, very light. No, that's all. All right. Very, very light. No. Been a bit busy month, the UNIS conversion and payroll, UNIS and budget meetings and and whatnot, but from fiscal twenty six budget, it's been a very relatively quiet month, so it's good.
Okay, under the consent agenda, I am looking for a motion to approve the following. The identified schedules of bills totaling four hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and twenty seven dollars and eighty two cents. The meeting minutes from our November twentieth, two thousand twenty five meeting. And policy updates as submitted by the Policy Subcommittee Team. And those are EB Safety Program, EBV First Aid, EBC Emergency Plans, EEA Student Transportation Services and EEAE School Bus Safety Program.
So moved. Uh, I just had a good question. See, the schedule bills might seem just low. Like we usually are over, you know, a million dollars. This was four hundred. Just curious.
Yeah, the uh, the town did not do a warrant last week. So we did not submit one and did not get signature. So yes, we did.
So the next one might be.
Yeah, it might be. Yes.
Let's thank you.
Um, I just wanted to make a note for the committee on policy EEAE. These are all really minor changes to MASC policies and that one our policy tracks the MASC policy and it has a couple of paragraphs of Marblehead specific language and the changes that we're proposing here are holding you to that the MASC recommended changes to the MASC portion of the policy. And then Marblehead specifically, which is staying as was, so.
Good. So we have a a motion by Kate, seconded by Henry. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, the motion passes four zero. We'll move on to the School Committee Communication and Discussion Item Section. Uh, John will start with our proposal.
So today we have, um, a proposal for a memorial bench of First Savannah Gatchel. Um, Hillary Jennings, I think spearheaded the um, discussion and she's here today to come up and talk. Off the the bench. So I think, um, Hillary had brought it to our attention and I asked her to kind of just, uh, uh, send us some, you know, a a basic idea of what the bench would look like, how much it will cost, where it's placed. And I think, uh, that was in your
Available to put up this week?
Um, it won't really, I mean, we could, but it's really, it's not the actual bench. It's just kind of like what it looks like, but I mean.
So that isn't what's bench.
It's kind of like an example. It's just like the, the like closest sample I could find uh, without ordering it. And and but it was the invoice. I got the invoice. I have all the information collected. Everything, um, should be there for the second.
So so do you want to kind of go through it or do you want me?
Oh, hi. Um, I'm Hillary Jennings. Um, thank you for having me tonight. Um, I've been a Marblehead resident of this town for just about forty seven years. Um, I'm also an IA at MBMS. I've been a dance teacher in this community for over twenty five years. I'm also the choreographer of the MHS musicals. I am also your favorite person to see at your local watering hole. Okay? Uh, and I'm also a soccer coach. Uh, what else? Elsa in the parade. Um, but I am here tonight to, um, talk about something that's kind of, um, you know, close to my heart. Uh, since I started at at MBMS, um, I feel like I've always kind of been like this pied paper. Like I always have the kids kind of following me, probably because I'm six two and, you know, the little kids look little no matter what, but, um, I'm a, I'm also a mom, an auntie, a friend, a daughter, a sister and a cousin. Um, and like an advocate for these little kids. And I know that a lot of these little kids like look up to me, like figuratively and literally. And so um, I kind of, you know, go into, I go into each school day as like an advocate for these kids. And they know that like Ms. Jennings or Ms. Jay or whatever they call me, Ms. Ellery, they know they can come for to me for a snack or a hug or, you know, a ride. Um, and so I feel really close to these kids. And when this tragedy occurred, I felt like I needed to do something really fast. And I've been working on this since this happened. I have a couple of things that her friends wrote. I hope that's okay if I read them to you guys. Okay. Um, this is from one of Savannah's really good friends and it's, it's beautiful. Um, when I first joined the MECO program in seventh grade, me and Savannah were in art class. I was at first scared to talk to her, but I got the courage. We started hanging out, talking late at night on the phone and we were inseparable for months. One day in the summer, these old ladies came up to us saying if they could take a picture of them. And we were laughing at how cute that was. And we said, that's definitely gonna be us in the future. And the last words that this thirteen year old girl heard from her best friend was, we need to appreciate the people in our lives. So thank you for being there in mind. I still think about it till this day. She was a bright, funny, gorgeous girl. You will be Miss Savvy. I love you deeply. We will always be in my heart. From another one of her very good friends and her neighbor. When I first moved to Marblehead, I met Savannah and Alyssa, who are my neighbors. Since then, me, Savannah and Alyssa have been very close. Me and Savannah would walk to school together, hang out in our yard with the other kids that live by us too. We gossip and text all the time and I never thought that our time together would end so soon. We hung out a week before she died. I would have never guessed that I would never see her again. Savannah and Alyssa mean so much to me. She was a beautiful girl that got her life taken away unjustly. I love you so much, Savannah, and no one will forget you. And I just think this is just like a beautiful testament to like, these are thirteen year old little girls losing their friend. And it has rocked this community big time, as we are seeing through the current, through all of our papers, through some people who are doing things that it's about time. And, um, I think this is a beautiful memorial. I think this will be a lovely spot for her. I think that the kids, um, gather in the morning and Alyssa had said something to me which was so beautiful. She said that like for years to come, like people can come and see your name and she'll always be remembered. And I think it would be a beautiful thing. And so I thank you guys. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you for giving the time. I just wanted to share a little bit. No, it's okay. I just want to tell a little bit more about, so the the bench itself is gonna have, I think, some trees to be placed off, you know, in the in the original entrance by the, the two trees are, there's uh, two trees there. Between the two trees on the cement right as you walk into that, um, and just like if you park over by the pickleball court and you come through that way, I think that'd be beautiful.
Great spot.
Spot. I was, you know, when I heard that, I said, that's, you couldn't, couldn't have found a better spot for that. I think it's just, it's amazing.
Um, one other thing to say is that the mo- the the thing is that, um, at first I was gonna write like by the MBMS community, but everybody that has, um, so I'd like to tell you guys that it's been fully funded. It's already been paid for. We had an anonymous donor come in like pretty much like that and paid for the remainder. So um, Glover, Brown, Village, MBMS, MHS and our, our angel donor have have fully funded funded this. So it's, it's pretty amazing. Like you ask for something and we can do hard things. It's kind of being proved right now. I've never done anything like this before, you guys. So like.
So you're writing the Marblehead community donated by.
Yeah, yes. I think that's more appropriate. Yeah.
Well, with an outside donor, that makes it. Cause I was thinking maybe the Marblehead school community, but.
Right.
But whatever you, you know.
Yeah, I just had, it just said donated by the Marblehead, Marblehead community in memory and loving memory of Savannah Gatchel.
Approved by a listener, we're good.
And approved by a listener.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Jen, seconded by Kate. All those in favor? Uh, the motion passes four zero. Okay, we'll move on to naming of the auditorium. Uh, the feedback we've received from community email has been overwhelmingly supportive of this initiative. And I've asked Ashley Scaffington and Henry Christiansen and others for just additional detail as to the signage and the associated costs. And so when I have this detail, bring it back to this committee to be voted on. Any discussion questions?
It's been, I happened to run back to say, we had a little bit of a discussion.
It sounded like things were starting to coalesce around what might make sense. So we'll, we'll bring that up at the next meeting, ready and involved like that. Okay, we'll move on to school start and end times update. So in November of two thousand twenty four, the school committee and the MEA signed a memorandum of agreement that among other things provided for a change in arrival times for students effective with the start of the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six academic year. This change was intended to enable the district to add a second recess for the elementary school grades. After the district implemented the new start times in August of two thousand twenty five, the MEA filed a charge of prohibited practice with the Massachusetts Department of Labor. Through the first months of the academic year, it became apparent to our administrators that further discussion regarding the impact of the time change at the secondary level needed to occur. Towards that end, the school committee administrative team and MEA leadership worked to resolve this matter, leading to a settlement agreement that was approved by the school committee in executive session on November twentieth, two thousand twenty five. Town Administrator Thatcher Keyser participated in that process and the committee voted five one in favor of the settlement. The full settlement agreement is included in the packet for tonight's meeting. As part of the settlement, the MEA dismissed its prohibited practice charge and withdrew agreements related to the school start times. In addition, the parties agreed to return the start and end times at the middle and high schools to the times that were in effect for the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five school year. And to permit teachers at the elementary schools to self-direct one PLC day each month for December through June of this school year. A group of administrators and educators will continue to meet over the next few months to address the impact of the student start times on teacher prep time at the elementary schools. And I would just like to point out that our school legal counsel was involved in this endeavor and provided guidance to ensure we were following appropriate law and procedures at all time.
So I'd just like to make a point of order. Uh, we have not voted to release the minutes of that executive session that you just announced the vote. So um, you really should have, that would have been done in executive session to release that.
Uh, I will follow up.
I'm gonna make a motion that we release the full minutes of all of the meetings that we had in executive session in regards to this issue.
Here, I'll, I'll second that so we can discuss it. So a motion's been made by Jen, seconded by Alan.
Typically do not release executive session results without a vote. So since you gave the results, I guess we should probably talk about, I mean, you talked about this issue of transparency. This was done in executive session. And now it's being dis- it's being presented in open session, but without a ratification. And without discussion of what so the, so the the public hasn't been able to see the deliberation on this or have any understanding of the deliberation, what went on, what went on here, just the result. Which I think is a wolf of lack of transparency. We fundamentally changed the nature of our memorandum of understanding, which is our contract that we negotiated last year. And went even further to make additional changes to the contract by reducing the seven minutes of the dismissal time for the high school, which did cost thirty six hours of teaching time and learning time. And none of that deliberation is available to the public. And the thirty six hours is approximately half a million dollars.
So I think it's really important to be very clear that this is a topic that we have discussed and that our legal counsel advised us. It was appropriate to do this settlement the way that we did it. And, you know, I think that there is certainly conversation to be had about what the deliberations look like. And, you know, when the time is proper to release those minutes and share that information with the public. I don't think that there was any intention to do anything in an untransparent and opaque way.
Well, it is not transparent. It is not transparent.
We routinely meet in executive sessions to talk about pending litigation. We routinely negotiate and vote on settlement agreements in executive session. This was a contract change.
Just, I mean, we've, I put a motion on the table. It's been seconded, um, that we release the minutes so that the public can see what was discussed and held up.
Well, I think we would, we're required to do that anyway. Now that the board is closed, I will work to put those minutes together. And I'll make sure that there is plenty of time for review. Because, you know, again, they don't have the recording to a while. So I'm happy to put those minutes together related to this.
I mean, I do think there should be somewhat of a sense of urgency that we can see what.
I just, I just want to speak to the seven minutes again, because I know this is a long contention. So the contract said the end time is two thirty seven high school. It absolutely said that in the contract. Absolutely was in place. It's my understanding that at least for the last decade or so, that has not been operationalized. So I, I want to clear the air on the fact that it didn't cost us five hundred thousand dollars. No time has been lost by the students because it was never there.
Well, it was in September.
Was in September. Okay, so minimal time because it's been there since September. So what I can say is that the seven minutes at the end of the day was never operational. I can't tell you why. I was here for that. I didn't operationalize it last year either. I whatever, it's a part of the contract that, yes, a hundred percent is in the contract. Hundred percent has been operationalized except for between September and November, whatever, finish. So I just want to make sure that that five hundred thousand dollar number is not an accurate number and it should not be put out there as an accurate number. All right, um, that's just all I had to say.
So I think procedurally, we need to have executives at the full set of executive sessions and it's prepared. We, we, we need to meet in executive session to review.
The border of this entire conversation is a creature of that thing. Anybody who can help with any one.
Sarah, Sarah, please.
Entire conversation.
So we have, we have a motion on the table.
Could we restate the motion with the, with the second as well, like it was made by Jen.
The motion was to pursue into Dow's announcement of results of executive session. The motion was to release the minutes of the executive session for the meetings, which was still there.
And you made the motion and now set.
Correct. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, the motion passes four to zero. Okay. Our next item, uh, Jen, you have to talk about enrollment.
Um, yeah, so, um, I asked to have this on the agenda for a discussion item for the school committee tonight. Um, the issue of the declining enrollment has been of our student body has been discussed quite a bit over the last several years. But if you look at the numbers from the end of, sort of, middle of June, before graduation, June seventh, we're um, to where we are this week. We get, and just so everyone knows, we get enrollment points every week. That show us broken down by, actually by class, by grade. And then to, in total, for how many students we have in the district. So we're down over two hundred students since June seventh to when the school opened in September. And then in last week's enrollment, we were down to twenty five students in a period of a week. Um, so we've gone from twenty seven fifty four students, I believe it was twenty seven fifty four, by June seventh, two thousand five hundred and eleven students as of this past week. So this comes up clearly in our budget subcommittee. There's, you know, there's discussions around that. Um, for sure, but it's also, you know, sort of bubbling up in general, um, out there in the public. So I Um, for sure, but it's also, you know, sort of bubbling up in general, um, out there in the public. So I. I, and I'm only one member, am very interested in. What's, what's going on? We, we're, you know, you can look at the numbers, but what's happening? Where are students going? Are we doing any kind of analysis or, or tracking where students are going or losing students during the school year? However, keeping track of that. So I thought that it's worth. Um, invite them on the agenda to discuss if other school committee members are interested in trying to. Dive, you know, dive into that or have the administration do some work to give us some analysis on that. Or if it's not something school committee is interested in. I put it on there for something that we could ask for further information before we got it. Because it does speak to, um. A whole bunch of issues, you know, um, certainly budget, I think is probably the biggest, um, issue, but it also speaks to. Um. You know, what's going on? Is, you know, is it a demographic issue? Is this, uh, is, are people, you know. Leaving because they're not happy with the school? I don't know. And I'd like to.
So I would very much like to hear from our administrators, both about what. The data shows, but also about what data we shouldn't be looking at. Because, you know, I also follow these weekly enrollment reports and I think that there's a lot in there. That needs to be explained. So that the committee can accurately understand what does.
I mean, it isn't lost on me either that, you know, I was thinking about it. I haven't talked, had a chance to talk to Mike about it. I mean, this also affects our chapter seventy. Now, we don't get a ton of chapter seventy money to begin with from the state and what we do get goes directly to the town. Unlike most or many school districts where it goes directly to the schools. But it would seem to me that we're getting to the point where it could certainly be. Something that the town side is going to take a look at when they start to see, um. This, this kind of drop because our chapter seventy money allocated from state is. Formula, the formula is based on a moment.
Right, so, um, so two things. One, I appreciate the conversations that needs to happen. Um, we did do some basic analysis. Just, I mean, I can share that, we can talk about it. Um, and I was prepared for the next meeting to kind of really get into the down and dirty stuff around. You know, where the kids are going. We can do that, that one now, so that's not coming to me with this, not intended today, but. If, if you want to, I can share where we've come so far. It sounds, it's, uh, I'll share it. It's, it's pretty much straightforward, but. What I think that, I think. Pass this up, but what I think is that is important is we get the enrollment reports every week, yes. I think part of. Um. I just, it is what it is right now. I just, it's, it's down on dirty data, but we can talk more specifics. Um, no, I didn't have time to get that from us, but this. Um, if, yeah, um, we'll see what they want to do. Um, we can put it up on the screen if you want to, uh.
I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, okay. We can put it up there, that'd be great. So, um, what I think, what I think is important is we have, we get the, we get the enrollment, um, reports that Jim was just talking about in Monday. Um, those numbers tell a story, they don't tell a whole story. So what, when Julie and I were looking at this, we said, you know, it probably makes sense to do. The D E S I has enrollment, you know, we do October one reporting. Which has probably the most accurate information. And I know I said before, like, you know, some of the D E S I data is behind, behind the ball. But what we can do is, we decided here was to look at. October one data from two thousand nineteen to present, and what does that number look like? So it's a point in time. It's a point in time when we report to D E S I. Um, so it's a little bit different than the weekly reports because the weekly reports are, are also a moment in time, but they, you know, they change based upon things. And those weekly reports have information in there that isn't captioned D E S I because we, we have preschool numbers in there, preschool's not mandated. D E S I only looks at K to twelve. So that's, that's, that's one piece. And then the other piece that's in that, in that daily report is when we. Have to test students who are either like live in Marblehead but go to say like Dever or another school. A private school where we're responsible for testing them. So a lot of times, um, that number that's in there. Uh, around testing, um, that category ebbs and flows based upon, we have to. We have to identify them before we can test them. So that number changes too. So the preschool number changes. The testing students number changes and that's not really captured in our overall enrollment data. So. We thought for, for, I think if we're all looking at the same data for discussion of enrollment. Increase, decrease, averages, et cetera. The October one D E S I data is, is probably the way to look. So I won't go through. The fine tooth comb at this point, but if you look at the enrollment, you can see, uh, grades K through twelve. Two thousand nineteen to present, you can see, uh, in where we are currently and what the average for each grade level is on the far right column. So like, for instance, I go through those numbers, K, there's an average one hundred and sixty kids, first grade's one seventy-six. Uh, second grade's one ninety-one, uh, third grade is an average of one ninety-three, one eighty-four for fourth grade, one eighty-eight for fifth. One ninety-one for six, one ninety for seventh, two seventeen for eighth. Twenty-two for ninth, twenty-nine, two thirty-one and two thirty-four for the rest of the high school. That's the average number of students we have over that period of time. If you go onto the next, I just wanna add to them. Right, so, okay, so back, so the D E S I.
So the average from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five, here, just pick one, um, uh. Seventh grade, the average, the average from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five is a hundred and ninety students. This year we have a hundred and seventy.
Correct, correct. So that, so that second to last column, twenty twenty-six, what we just submitted to the state. That we just submitted that October, what that second to last column. So yes, it's, so in that, in that grade level, yes, we're down to twenty-six. So you can, you can see where the, where it ebbs and flows.
We're down in every single grade.
Yes, so. Yeah, and that points out lots of, this, this is a way to look at the data in one point in time that's measured year to year through D E S I, through our desk reporting. Um, so it's, it's accurately captured. So if you go to the next one, it's look at the percent change to enrollment by grade. So we did a similar thing from eight to twelve. That's nineteen through now. So you can look at the far right column, what the percentage changed in. So yes, it's minus four point two, minus five point five, you know. You know, throughout is, they are minus numbers. So there is definitely a dip in enrollment. And then the last, very last slide, I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt. That percentage changed over time. What's that compared to? Is that compared to the average? Or is that compared to?
The angle on average, yes. So for, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five, the average drop for, um. Fourth grade, well, that's, uh, for, um, seventh grade is four point six percent a year. So that's the average over the last. Six years.
We chose to present this like you can really track. So if you start in the top left, right, where our kindergartners were, right, in twenty nineteen, and you can follow diagonally down. You can see the path, right? So we know some of our classes when they start at a certain size. So that's really important to not only look at it horizontally, but also, um, go way down. So for example, the K. In twenty nineteen, the class is one seventy-six, and they grew to one ninety, first grade and so forth. So you can also check the.
And what, and what that, with looking at the data that way is it allows us to make adjustments we may need to. So for instance, like second grade and. Maybe like a large, large group of students this year. So we know that next year that third grade class is going to be big. So we may need to say, okay, a second grade teacher needs to slide up to third grade. But I just use that as an example. It could be pretty much at any of the, um, the grade. High school's a little bit different, this high school. Um, so, yeah, thank you for pointing that out, Julia. And then the last slide, and for now, I mean, we're gonna, we'll get into the data because what I think the question really is, is. We, we have a dip at, say, fifth grade, why? Where are they going? So we can look at, and we'll look at like where we are now, right? So if we started with. I remember we said fifty-seven, fifty-four, we're at twenty-five, eleven. We will be able to pull the data from Katie, our data. And she can say, we can say, okay, in second grade, we lost X amount of kids. Where did they go? Two of them went to homeschooling, three went to private school, four moved out of district. And we can do that for a run. And I think that's the data that we need to have and discuss as a committee. And so the community can understand, because I think. Throw out willy-nilly numbers and we're comparing the numbers that aren't apples to apples, I think is where we're getting bought on in some of the conversations. So I think this will be a good starting point. And I really appreciate Jen, you bringing this up so that we can have this discussion now before we get too far down the road of the budget process. So this last one is, is annual, average annual enrollment percent change over time is minus three point eighty when you look at all things.
For seven years.
Over from eighteen.
A year, year, seven years, twenty-four, five percent, like, right?
Annual average percentage.
Yeah, each year. Like each year it's going down. An average just under four percent.
So, yes, so, I mean, that, that, that paints the picture, right? I mean, that paints it in this. So I, I, again, I think this is a good conversation to have. I think next meeting we'll have the data that kind of supports the rest of this. We can really look at. Parent, we can look at, you know, where we're losing kids to, you know, we have sometime, you know, right after four, we had a huge number of homeschool students. And where those kids are, they come back to us and they go somewhere else. Um, the kids move out of district. And then the answer to why is always the big question. And I don't, we can't always know that, but we can survive. So we can look and say, you know, okay, we lost. Nine kids to see transfer or whatever. So, and then that gives us data points to look at, start having those discussions. Cause I think. When I've had these discussions over the course of me being the superintendent and look at, there's always pinch points, right? There's eighth grade to ninth grade, there's, you know, um. One school to next school, you know, uh, we lost a lot of sophomores this past year. We got not as many kindergartners coming. So, you know, there's that. But I think you look at and say, okay, why are we losing eighth grade, you know, eighth grade to ninth grade? What else can we do at the high school level to help celebrate this year so that eighth graders, you know, want them? So those are things we, we're already having conversations about, but how we. Um, against that, those transition years and. When we find out where everyone's going with one, we can ask the questions.
Do, do we have. An obligation to know where every child is in school, that, that.
Yes, their residence tomorrow ahead, we have to know are they homeschooled, are they private schooled, did they drop off, did they move, did they?
So I have asked this question before and have been told we don't know, but we should know. All school age, the number of school age children in the town. We have that information. That would be good information to have as well, I, I think.
Yeah, I mean, some of that, some of that's census driven, but like, so when kid, when kids are registered, we know, like, once they register in school, we track them. So, I mean, preschoolers is, is, is a weird thing because it's not mandated preschool. So it's a number that ebbs and flows and yes, it's part of the overall number, oh my gosh, we lost all those kids. But we really, and honestly, kindergarten, we need, have to start tracking it. Um, it's good to know how many preschools we have, because that forms our kindergarten. Um, but it's also, and it's also good to know, like, hey, we. We had a hundred preschools, now we have seventy, where those third grade students go home. So that, that's all information. And I think to your point, Jen, yes, if we have, you know. Three thousand, you know, school age students in the district, we only have twenty-five hundred of them here, but that's, that's a, that's the question range. So, that's, that's all information.
Just to make sure I'm following this correctly, you, if there's a family in town who. Their children have never been enrolled at a public school, just they attended private pre-K. Private school from there, they are still. You're aware of those children.
No, not, no, not always.
They were enrolled and then they move on.
Or, or some, we, there are situations where kids have never ever stepped foot in Marblehead public schools, maybe we've had to test them. Um, so we've never seen them, we test them, they end up somewhere, we, you know, sometimes we're programmatically responsible for an I P for a child. Those they live here, they may go, you know, those things where we have to provide service, where we have to make sure the services provide. So that's the, that's the gray area, but we have a pretty good handle on this. So once.
But a child could. Have never registered.
That's up to the parents, so, you know, I, I, it could be on the census, but my parents may, I don't know, they may. Have moved to Michigan, their grandparents, we better know, I mean, that. What we do know, we have to track, we have to report to the state, they were here, now they're not here, when they go. So there's all this category. I talked to Steven. Tech director, um, about this and. We were having a conversation a few days ago that when he got here, the, the categories weren't. All separability needs to be. So since he's been here, they have been. So I felt a bit of that, and you know, how accurate that data is, but. Moving forward, definitely, that's the right way. That's all I have at this point, but I have. We'll have much more. Do you have anything to add? I'm sorry.
I think, just to circle back. Just to circle back to your point, Superintendent, about the, um, making the adjustments yearly. I think that's really been important to reiterate how. This is something we look at, we make the adjustments each year as part of our process and, um. I think that's really important. So while we're gonna provide and happily provide some more information, just notes on what the committee's looking for. Um, this is something that we do on the regular, um, as we look at, you know, shifting classrooms, teachers and so forth each year, so.
And, and I'm, and I'm hugely concerned that, you know, if, if we're truly down two hundred kids from, you know, that, that's huge a concern. We need, we need to at least try to find them. I mean, I have all answers, but that is concerning for all the reasons you brought up, not, not just the chapter seventy, but like why, like, what are we doing? What could we be doing differently? Um, and it, and it forms practice and budget informs, you know, structure and informs it, so.
Jen, can I just ask? We're, so I don't have access to the enrollment reports from last year. When I joined the committee, the twelfth grade graduated. So the first one I see is not the number that you're citing. So I've been comparing this year's enrollment reports to the fifth year that John mentioned you were using. In your presentation to us in early September, which shows about two percent decline. So I'm, could you share the enrollment?
I can do that, but so can Stephen. I mean, it's a weekly assessment report. So yes, I will send what I have, but happy, because I have a file for it, but. You know, Stephen could also send to the enrollment members.
I mean, if someone. The one that you're.
I, yeah, I think I used June seventh or June second, I forget the date. You have to take the. I was looking at the last date before the students graduate, when they graduate. Then they fall off and they don't come back on.
And that's why October one is the, is the number we should.
You've got to get it captured, but it was a big class that graduated, so that's, you know. It all feeds into it, but you can, when you look at their assessment reports, you can see, I mean, I do the math, you know, the, you line them up and you can see which grade. From, you know, last year's first grade to this year's second grade is, you know, twenty less students.
Yep.
And you can do it for each, you know, for each grade. And so, yes.
Alright, thank you. My next item is around policy updates.
So we have two policies that are before the committee tonight for approval, um. The, beyond the ones that we did in the consent agenda. The first one, um, I'll make a motion to approve the updates to policy E E A A, which. Is previously known as transportation of regular education students. Uh, so. The changes to this policy are changing the title of the policy from transportation of regular education students to walkers and riders. Um, and then there's just some, I would say refinement of the language around. You know, that we provide transportation for students when their eyes, P Ps require it. Um, and these changes were recommended by M A S C, discussed by policies of committee and supported by.
Okay, a motion made by Kate, seconded by Henry. Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Alright, the motion passes four zero.
And then the other policy that we're bringing forward is policy E E A G. So I'll make a motion to approve the changes to policy E E A G, student transportation in private vehicles.
Seconded by Henry.
The only thing is, um. I had a question for John. On this one, so, which I forgot to ask, or he wasn't in our meeting. He had left the meeting when we got to this part. Can we table this till he gets back? Or, I don't worry, I had just a question for him.
I don't have a problem if you want to.
Um. So we have. Five policies, um, that are new policies that the. Policy subcommittee has voted. We held a first reading and we have voted to bring them forward for second readings. These are all policies in the E section. For the policy handbook, it's, um, E C A B, access to buildings and grounds. E F B A, school food and nutrition meal modifications. E F E, civil rights complaint policy for child nutrition programs. E H A A, district security relating to technology and E H B, data and records retention. Um, these are all new policies that M A S C has recommended the district adopt. Um, again, they've been reviewed by this superintendent. He recommends that the committee adopt them as written. So as I said, these policies all had their first reading in the policy subcommittee on November twentieth. They're here tonight for a second reading. Um, so if there are questions or concerns about any of the policies, policy subcommittee can address those concerns. Um, otherwise, we can bring them back to the fourth committee. For our third reading in a book. You left off, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Alright, any, no motion needed to this, just, just because it's the second reading, right?
The next time there aren't any challenges.
Okay.
So the next policy is another one that we need John here for, so.
I was gonna jump to. What, what about, uh? I was gonna jump to, what, what about, uh, G for, can we do that without Johnny comfortable with that one? Okay, let's, let's move on to that then, please. Around next steps, uh, strategic planning and elevating educator voices goals.
Um, so these two goals that we approved it over the last couple of meetings, each had a component of appointing um, a member or a subcommittee to do work related to the goal and bring, you know, information back to the school committee. And when we voted the goals, we did not discuss how we wanted to go about doing that. Um, and I wanted to bring that back tonight to talk about how the committee would like to handle that component of the goals, so that. So I mean, I'll just say that I, you know, I brought these goals forward. They're both ones that I am interested in working on and happy, you know, to, to do and report back to the full committee, but I also didn't want to just. My computer is very important.
So on these. Oh, wait, oh, sorry, sorry.
Uh, first one is elevate educating voices goal, yes. So that one calls for a member or an ad hoc subcommittee to research how other school committees use non-voting members, um, and so.
So what are we voting on?
We're, we're discussing and potentially voting on who is going to take that. So whether we want a subcommittee doing it, whether we want one person to do the research and, you know, come back to the committee.
You volunteered to do it?
I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm happy with you doing that. I sort of have enough.
Yeah, I think a lot of us have, a lot, but. You know, I, I think if there are multiple people interested in working on something, then that's great. Um.
The only thing I'd say is typically we do. Um, it allows for transparency, it allows for good governance, um, it allows that the business to be done in public that way. Um, so there is something to be said about having the subcommittee to do this. Uh, because it does allow the public to see, you know, what's, what's going into this, um, and that it's, you know, typically our, our work is done.
So in that case, probably looking for a subcommittee around this, of which Kate has already volunteered to be one person.
So I'll make a motion that we have a subcommittee, uh, an ad hoc subcommittee for the elevate educator voices goal.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a, a motion made by Jen, seconded by Kate. Uh, specifically around a subcommittee goal to address what Kate brought up around, uh, doing some of the work around the elevate educator voices goal. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right, so that, this is to approve the.
The start of a, a subcommittee around this. Uh, all right, uh, the motion passes four zero. Um, and I guess now we can express, if anyone wants to express interest around being on this, um, I, I have an interest.
Well, Melissa's not here. Um, so perhaps we should determine whether she has an interest.
It's the wall of the committee? That we've done, that's kind of been what we've done in the past. If someone wasn't here, I think that happened with you entering, we waited for the next meeting. So I think that's appropriate. Thank you, Jen. Let me just put it in my next meeting bucket.
I mean, you might, as chair, want to give that a conversation.
I will. I'll, I'll bring her up to speed.
So it's the exact, basically the same question for the strategic planning goal. Um, which had a component of looking at what sort of the long-term strategic planning structure would or should look like for the district to report to.
I don't see anything about it. I'm just, so let me just, maybe for the interest of the public, we can read the goal. It's the school committee goal is to refocus school committee efforts on high-level district oversight and strategic planning in a way that supports the operational work and priorities of our administrators. To do this, the school committee will agree to a statement that articulates a clear division of responsibilities between the school committee and the administration, posted to the school committee website and reference. I guess that being the division responsibilities, evaluate through check-ins superintendent and his team. Two, support the superintendent in completing the district approval plan by setting a near-term deadline for school committee review of the draft to ensure the plan fits certain priorities. Establishing a timetable for superintendent to gather across the stakeholder input and monitoring adherence to that timetable. Reviewing and approving the finalized plan in spring twenty twenty-six for implementation on July one. And then consider strategic planning frameworks for the district moving forward with clearly articulated responsibilities for the school committee in that process. And then, oh, and then the second one, appoint a member or an ad hoc subcommittee to develop a proposed plan for consideration by the full school committee in spring of twenty twenty-six to run currently with the district approval. So I guess committee, this, potentially this subcommittee will be doing one section of this.
You're just being, I mean, that's sort of what this future looks like.
Kind of in the same spot without balls in.
Maybe we can, if we want to do it through a subcommittee.
I mean, could there be one subcommittee to do both things? So I'll make a motion that we create, that the, the ad hoc subcommittee is to work on both these two goals, like educating, elevating, elevating educator voices and strategic.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so there's been a motion by Jen, seconded by Kate, around having, um, one subcommittee um, address both the educate, the elevating educator voices and the ad hoc, uh, plan for the strategic planning goal. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? And the motion passes four zero. And we will hold off on putting members on that committee until all five of us in prison. Okay, um, is that, is that it for G?
Yeah, so we want to go back.
Yeah, we go back to.
I had a question just before we voted, um, these new policies. So E, uh, I, I think you were not in the meet, the subcommittee meeting.
We talked about.
And we talked about this and I not follow up with you, apologize, but E E A G is the student transportation of private vehicles. I just wanted to make sure, because the, one of the change or the change, that one of the updates says driver and any non-student adult passenger will be subject to a satisfactory query and or background check in accordance with that generalizing school policy. Are we prepared to operationally?
Because, because it's awesome, I understand, I'll ask if I should say something about having permission for parents, yeah.
It says the parents of students to be transported in this land are fully informed. As to the method or the means of transportation will sign a statement to this event.
Yeah, so I think, you know, typically this falls under like, hey, kids, you know, have a coaching, you have the kid in the practice and they can have it home and lost, and we have to get such a parent. Yeah, that, that's typically what happens, but, um, if it's outside of that, that means, if, if it was a driver that we didn't already have court and fingerprinted, for whatever reason, they wouldn't be able to. Okay, but this, 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 uh, this is.
It just seems to me that it, like, in the, sort of, in the real world, that could be challenging.
Correct, and it can be a challenge, because, you know, we quite quickly could get, but it would be a problem with a lot of it, but if we didn't know about them, we have to take action, so, I mean. But when the parent says, yes, it's okay to go with them, and then, so say it's a culture teacher, whatever, it's, person's gonna go with this, kid's gonna go with this person. Aaron knows by, person that you have, has volunteered as a court staff of this, but, you know. So it's an extent that we have that information.
So, I think, I don't know.
We made the motion, you made the motion, Kate, Henry seconded, we did not hold on it. So is there any further discussion on this? On E E A J?
Well, it's all.
Uh, so all in favor? Okay, the motion passes for zero. And we wanted to go back to the.
So. Yeah, we had had on the, um, agenda for tonight, a second reading of, on the competency determination. Um, this is a policy that Desi, it's a new Desi requirement, um, coming out of the elimination of MCAS as a graduation requirement. And we've had two policy subcommittee meetings, um, with John and Julia to review the proposed policy. But the policy subcommittee is not in agreement on how to move forward with this policy. Um, so we have not been able to consider or vote on a motion to bring the policy to the full school committee for a second reading. Uh, but given that we are subcommittee two, that means we're deadlocked. So I would like to make a motion that the full school committee have a reading of the policy this evening. Um, so that John and Julia can inform all of us about what they are proposing and we can have a discussion about the next steps the committee would like to take in with regard to this policy.
I'll second that. Okay, uh, we have a motion made by Kate, seconded by Al. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, the motion passes four zero. Okay, uh, I think we now move down to.
My, my motion was to do it tonight, to have John and Julia fill us in.
So we probably should.
Yeah, so I can do.
None of this, unless we have it up on the screen and just so folks can see it.
Right.
Again, in the transparency.
It's.
Oh, it's in the files for today. In the packet? It's in the packet for today, or do you want me to just put it up? I already have it. That's fine, I'll do it right now. It's, I already have.
I have car copy too, just so. So what I do is, um, this is the draft, the draft policy, and I also attached the, um, we attached the legislation, legis. The regulations, the six, six oh three CMR and the national law that speaks to this, just because I think that's part of the conversation that we need to have. So I, I, that's not in the box with the brackets, but I'll, I'll hand out.
But we didn't have that this morning.
No, we, I, I refer to.
Hyperlinked. I actually went ahead and printed it. It's been hyperlinked on the, the draft.
Oh, right.
Yeah, just, uh.
Oh, at the bottom. Yeah, the legal references. Yeah, I just went to print, just so we're not.
So, um, so as, as we've mentioned, uh, you know, we have to create a policy around competency determination on after the, you know, the, uh, end cast, it's no longer, um, the measurement. So I'll just go through the draft quickly. So this is in alignment with, with what the, uh, six oh three C M R thirty dash oh three regulations. Um, that basically says that we have to establish a competency determination. So one of the graduate, one of the requirements for graduation Massachusetts is to determine competency, um, in some just previously covered by the end cast. In addition to other requirements for graduation, students must have been determined by the district to have achieved mastery of the common core of skills, competency and knowledge in lots of set areas, and satisfactorily completed coursework that has been certified with the students' district as showing mastery of skills, competencies, and knowledge contained in state academic standards and curriculum frameworks. Um, the requirements are determination of competency shall include demonstrating mastery of skills in E L A, math, science, and the satisfactory completion of relevant coursework aligned to the standards measured by the high school English, Language Arts, Math, Science, M Cast assessments in two thousand and twenty-three. So that, that, so the tenth grade M pass was in those areas. So what the state is saying is we have to look at the sophomore year and, um, create this policy that says they have to, um, you have to take it past the courses in that, in that grade level, uh, for the confidence piece. Um, so it's, it's the, this is sophomore year. And it, uh, an additional requirement for, uh, Master of U S History will be following in twenty twenty-seven. To show mastery, a student must successfully complete in accordance with Marlborough Public Schools grading policy or by any other appropriate methodology as may be determined by the district administration, i.e. final assessment for a course. Perhaps on a portfolio or an equivalent measure to identify in the district C D policy, a student enrolled in Marlborough Public Schools will be determined to have satisfactorily completed coursework and earn full credit in accordance with the district's grading policy and requirements outlined below. So then we go through E L A, um, coursework requires they have to pass English nine and ten, the passing grade. Um, and that's to satisfy this course requirements, English, Language Arts course must be taken in grades. E L A that we'd be looking at.
Is that the law you were just reading for the?
That's what, that's what, um, yeah, that's what, uh, yes, as we have to, we have to, we have to focus on what the M pass had focused on, suppose. So that's the areas they, they help pass. So similar to mathematics, the, the state says we have to, they have to receive a passing grade for both the algebra one and geometry. Um, the middle school algebra one course certified by the district meets the course requirements for the mathematics, according to the C D and geometry course must be taken in grades, ninety twelve. Science, receiving mess, passing grade in, in credits for biology and, and additional lab science course, chemistry, physics, or engineering. Um, again, that's taken nineteen twelve. And then begin in twenty twenty-seven, as I mentioned, U S history, um, see passing grade, um, incredible United States history. Um, of the alliance courses, Marlborough Public Schools office courses in alignment with the state curriculum frameworks that meet the above requirements, students will demonstrate mastery in each of the content areas. Oh, that I already mentioned, summer school program will be provided for students who fail a course requiring a passive rate for compliment determination. So we have a, you know, a backup to help them out if they don't pass. Students who do not pass the course, courses as outlined above will be placed in a proficiency plan in which students will demonstrate evidence immediately the learning standards of the course, from student work such as classroom assignments, projects, and assessments, that applicable course for the proficiency plan would be in the categories as outlined, English, math, science, and U S history. Students professionally be assessed by principal and designated. Initial consideration, so students with disabilities, um, you must provide a, a, a appropriate public education. Uh, and determine that the student has met competency and local graduation requirements prior to graduating that student. Students with disabilities who have been placed in an artist replacement must meet the requirements of the competency determination policy of the placing school district. Discussion of the competency determination must be part of it. I E P, planning teams, tradition planning. I E P team will need professional judgment to determine if the student was significant cognitive disabilities eligible for extended portfolio assessment. So if a kid's in, in an artist replacement, um, we, we have to make sure that their curriculum is in alignment with ours. If, uh, with or without the M pass, um, uh, the competency determination that, uh, the state has said the M pass all will still be in place, um, regardless of all the other things we've talked about with, uh, the, the new, uh, uh, graduation framework. So just one we mentioned there. Uh, for E L L, uh, English language learners, Marlborough Public Schools shall on a case-by-case basis determine the appropriate courses necessary for English language learners to achieve language proficiency and need to competency determination requirements. If they're late in rolling to our schools, uh, this is an allowance, um, that we're, we're able to, to, um, to access, uh, if they come late. You know, after the ninth grade year, uh, we can do a transfer preview by the principal. This is one area that they can use the M pass for, or at least meeting or exceeding achievement levels on a relevant high school M pass assessment, provided meeting the standard for substituted equivalent for district certified. Um, that's only for E L L. Appeals process. With that, if for late in all years. Um, so we haven't had, you know, we haven't had a chance to kind of see what their, um, instructions been, et cetera, so. Uh, there is an appeals process. Current students and parents may appeal in determination competency with the following procedures, it will be submitted to Marlborough High School principal, unsatisfied with the appeal of our head high school principal, current student and parents being yellow superintendent. The M A C D regulations also provisions the desk commissioner to waive a provision of regulations for the cause, um, requesting this. So that's, that's the overall, um, competency determination. So we had, we had to kind of talk about this in some community. Um, there was some conversations, uh, we have proposed this as, as the current. Um, there was some conversations, uh, we have proposed this as as the current. Competency determination policy, um, and in light of the frameworks that are coming out, uh, your part part of my thought is that. We put this into place pretty much already, we're kind of solidifying it going forward, and then when the state tells us how they're gonna change things again. There's gonna be another change, so I I think it's important to not continue to make a change, another change, another change. Um. We don't know how long it's gonna take for the state, um, but it's supposed to finalize graduation framework by June, what. Possible implementation following the year, um, not holding my breath on that, but in the meantime, we have to submit something to the state in regard to the competency determination. I think. You know, the uh. We're we are in alignment with what the regulation says, we're in alignment with what most other school districts that we've looked into are doing, they're doing passing grade, they're not, you know, um. Um, making other adjustments to that, because it's aligned with the regulation, so. Um, then, so that's basically what what's for you tonight of the first reading. Of that 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 being discussed. I know it's a lot to take in, so I mean, you know, obviously we're gonna have to have a second and likely a third reading, so we can.
So uh, let me just put it out on the table as to what issue was. So Kate Kate and I didn't um, we need to go to a first reading, so here is my concern. Um, th- this is get gets, I get. A little bit um confused on this, but we have competency determination policies we're required to. And we have a graduation requirement. Policy. Uh, policy, which we're required to. Um, and so. They are sort of intertwined, if you will. Um, so the graduation requirement, which is also a long kind of long policy, goes through all of the requirements that of the courses that. Need to be taken and the number of credits that need to be taken um in order to graduate from from Marblehead School. And then the competency determination is sort of a. Some. That of that, I guess, for lack of a better term. So in within that, it says, you know, these are the courses um that are primarily through tenth grade. That you must pass in order to. Just to to display competency and in order to get a diploma. So you I guess you have to do both. Is it the other?
Right.
So my concern was, um, first, it seemed, uh, uh, at first, it it seemed like to show ninth and tenth grade work. When you don't have M CAS, the M CAS used to be a tenth grade test, and then. That was when M CAS ended, and so if a student wasn't able to earn a. Proficient or proficient, right, was um on M CAS, they'd have two more years in order to be able to do that and then graduate on on time. But we don't have that anymore, um, so I wasn't sure why we were stopping at tenth grade, why would we not want? To show mastery at a higher level, however, it does show that the reg says it's it's equated to what was M CAS, so got that. But we talk about a passing grade and competency determination, so then I dug down um and tried to determine, you know, okay, what is a passing grade? So. According to our. Graduation promotion requirements in the. Program of studies. It says that credits, so. You're required to earn the credits, in order to the credits, you have to fully complete the course. And you are rewarded a a final course grade of A, B, C, or D. Or P, if you're doing a pass fail. So then you go to the. Yeah, book. And you have the under academic affairs. Grades. And it starts from ninety-four to a hundred is an A, ninety, ninety-three is an A minus, so again, so a. D is a sixty-four to a sixty-six. So this, so. I guess a sixty-four is what you need to pass. It is, okay, this is where I'm confused. What I was suggesting is that ought ought we to consider? A passing grade in order for competency determination to be something higher than a sixty, which I'm told is sixty, it it seems conflicting in the in the document. But the superintendent is saying that a sixty, which is a D minus.
Does have a plus minus.
Okay, is is what we determine for a passing grade, and I am just suggesting that. Do we want to consider a higher bar for our students? And if we were to do that, and I'm not talking about something crazy, I'm talking like a sixty-five. Um, to consider for our students, it still gives them, a student, two options, one, you still have two years. Potentially, if you have to. You know, create to get a higher grade. Also, it does appear, and if I may not be reading this correctly. That the assessment, a capstone or portfolio project or equivalent measure are the. A bit are the. Options for showing master. So you could do a portfolio project, you could do a capstone, you there's other ways in this draft policy. To do to just to show your confidence.
Correct.
So I and the superintendent. I guess do, I don't know, to agree with me, but I just, um, I would like to. Share with the committee, because we weren't, we were sort of deadlocked on this, that um, do we want to consider a higher bar? I don't think I'm crazy in terms of the level of the bar, but um, something higher than a six.
I I may I may have misspoke on a sixty, I just I I may have made a something that that sixty was the bottom of. See, what you're saying is what's before.
Well, I so a D plus is a sixty-seven to a sixty-nine, a D is a sixty-four to a sixty-six, and a D minus is a sixty to a sixty-three.
Right, sorry.
And then an F is a zero to fifty-nine.
Yes, okay, I didn't miss.
So I don't know. What a D is, I guess.
But from a plus to the minus, it's.
Okay, so it's sixty. Okay, alright, so that is correct, okay. So that's, that was my feeling, that. Uh, we. Should we be looking at? A hi- a slightly higher bar. The other thing that also I wonder about is, and it also wasn't clear, is some of these courses later on in terms of the graduation requirement have, some have prerequisites. So I guess the prerequisite is also a sixty? Okay. All right, that was, I wasn't, that was.
So is this based? I'm sorry.
I just. My concern, I agree with you that we should be seeking to have upper standards, and that we should have how standards for students. My concern is that the way that the regulation is drafted is that. The competency policy is tied to. What we would give credit for. So we are making this wholesale change in the service of a competency policy. As opposed to doing it through sort of a rigorous analysis of. What's going on ac- academically and whether a change of that nature to the entirety of how we award academic credit is important. So it's.
Well, the draft policy talks about a passing grade, and the de- definition of a passing grade is up to the local school. So it could vary from district to district. Correct?
I think that's accurate.
So. We could consider this policy describing the passing grade and simultaneously or contemporaneously. Review and consider a change in when we're getting credit. If we want to consider that, because that would change credit, and then even de facto. You know.
I understand that that is, but that's what I'm saying, my concern is, is that we are then considering making that change, not because our. Professional educators are telling us that we need to make that sort of a change, and we need to move our direct, our district in that direction. But because we're seeking to make our competency determination more rigorous than what the state regulations are.
But the state doesn't require. The state doesn't define a person. The state doesn't define a passing grade, we define a passing grade. State reg, unless I'm reading this incorrectly, the state regulation says. You need to receive a passing grade in these courses to demonstrate mastery for competency determination, the school district defines what a passing grade is.
Right, which you've which we've defined, so that's that's all. So I think, so the second part, I and I don't. We've had this conversation, it's it's kind of, it's kind of chicken, chicken and egg, I guess, kind of thing where I agree that we should have higher standards, I think, I agree that. We want to make sure, you know, we're rigorous, but I guess my thought is that the rigor, the rigor associated with any of those grades. Is in the instruction, in the teaching, learning, in the classroom, it's not in the low grades. And I know that doesn't make sense, but from an educational standpoint, I say, like. What we ask our teachers to do in terms of instructing our students, I contend that it's we provide rigorous instruction to our students. So therefore, in my opinion, say, let's just pick a B, a B in Marblehead, my opinion. Is could be seen and likely is more rigorous than a B, but the same number in a different district, so.
Well, how do we know?
Well. Right, so that's that's the part, but like, because. I mean, is data around like some data around, you know, how many, how many students have, you know, fall below that threshold, and it's it's very few, and. It's mostly students that have I P's and have have other uh disabilities and again, way of someone learning. So I think, you know, I guess raising the raising the the. The number of a grade level is, doesn't necessarily equate to increasing, so I just get nervous that we're changing something. So that we can say we have a higher standard than other all the other districts around this, but is that really?
Do we, I don't know what other districts do.
Do have a higher standard because of our graduation requirements. They are well above the my cap and the.
Yep.
Right, the one the Desi recommends, so we are very rigorous in our coursework and um what we're doing to support our students. Um, with, we look at a graduation rates, right, that tells us a lot about academic performance, also look at college bound rate, tells us a lot about academic performance as well. Um, and and really, at the end of the day, our students are challenging themselves. We've added AP courses, we've added dual enrollment courses, and they are consistently um. Involved in those classes, um, and I look forward to bringing some of the AP data to the team soon.
I would just, I mean, I haven't done them before, maybe we do that. You guys can just seeing what some other, and there are districts that we have, while districts that we. Sort of, you know, aspire to be, um.
Consider.
They aspire to. Yeah, well, or that, but there are, you know, there are districts that we get compared, there's dark districts, you know, what are what are they doing? Um. I think it's just worth.
Yes, what I can say is that the the conversations we've had with with like districts and districts that we we this, you know, we talked to, you talked to super tennis assistants, super tennis, pretty much all that stuff. Are doing this, this, they're to go with, the regulations say is passing.
How are they defining the first grade?
Similar to whether it may be maybe like sixty-five, sixty, but it's it's in that ballpark, it's no, I I haven't seen anyone, frankly, if you have, that's higher than. Let's see, or be looking like that, it's.
And that's not what I'm suggesting.
No, no, I know, but I'm just saying, that's that's what I'm seeing, so that's what we're seeing, so I mean. You know, when we when we compare ourselves to the dark districts, and this is very mind blowing. It's was one of the times, and this is the first reading, so we can certainly certainly have all their discussions about it, I just, you know.
I would personally like to see some. On some other districts. That's only.
So can I, interesting. I'd like to raise the question of whether. Given that. This issue that we're talking about really lives within the graduation requirements and not so much within the competency determination or. Um. Whether. The time it's going to take to look at that data. Is worth holding up the passage of a policy that our administrators are supposed to submit to T S A by the end of the year. You know, could we do them simultaneously? Can we approve? The competency determination policy that they put before us. And then continue to do the work you're asking to look at the data and to understand, you know, the standards around what we consider to be.
Well, we do have three reading words, credit. Right, we do have three. Right, typically, the way this works is when you do first reading, second reading, third reading, anything can change, so things change during the readings. And it's the third and or additional, it could be four, five, six, seventeen, it's the last third or greater reading is the final one, they can change, so we don't have to. You know.
But my point is that what would be changing is not anything that's in this draft, we would be changing something in a different. Document, and so we could approve this policy and continue to do that other work, which would then effectively change.
I'm not. But I also feel like in the interest of making sure it happens that. Um, I don't, I don't think this is a lot to add, and I was just looking at a handful of schools, you know, seven, eight, nine, ten schools and find out what. I don't think it's a lot of work. And that between now and the third reading. Get that information. Because once we pass this, we've defined what passing.
So so what you're asking, the data you're looking for from other districts is what they consider a passing grade? But that doesn't affect this, as is written, this just says passing grade.
Correct, but.
So I'm wondering why, like, why we can't progress with this, because now.
Yeah.
We, yeah, and but it doesn't go against what you're suggesting, I think, Jen, is that we are then also need to look at what a passing grade is.
And I don't know where that, I don't know what subcommittee that would happen, I mean, it's, you know, this is the, this is the vehicle to make sure that that happens.
So so I think the other piece is like, if we're if we're talking about change, so this is the vehicle, yes, and the other piece we're talking about is separate, but. In in terms of what we're here, but I guess the question that it comes like, say. Someone's already. Met with the competency determinations that we, you know, they passed ninth, tenth grade, whatever, now they're in the eleventh grade, and you say, well, now. It's a sixty-five instead of a sixty, and they got a sixty-four.
Well, you have to operationalize so that it's for students knowing.
Right, so we'd have to, it'd have to be a future.
Yeah.
Point, I just want to make sure, talking about the same thing, because anything's always going to change, yeah. But I would need to say a lot, so I think, you know, there's this, this, there's more discussion we're gonna have, so we're not gonna solve it today, but I think, you know, some of the discussion is who. How many students like haven't gotten to the point where they've got, they've they've had, they've. Met met what this will be as far as the competency, what does that look like, who are they, in terms of um, what percentage of student population we're talking about, and that. I look at, if we have, you know, ten or twelve kids that that have that level of grade, and now we we've. Changed that to like where that ten becomes sixty, I mean, is that helping, is that, is that really?
I would argue yes.
Well, I don't know, but that's achieving achieving. So we're we're looking at ways to further.
To to ensure that they are able to get. A high grade, you know, they're able to. Get the material.
They are, they are concerned, you know, really, well, we have.
Then why are we?
As I said, the vast majority of our students are. Sees it above, and to superintendent's point, when there's students that are not, there's usually. Further story to students.
But there, or there are other activities for them to determine. And.
I think I think we just, I think we need to really look at, like, what do what do we define rigorizing, what do what do we define? You know, I I again, I think. The passing rate thing is this is. It it it's not, there's no, there's nothing that says, hey, a passing rate has to be this, or has to be this, and it's up to the local district, yes, but like. Who's to say? Like, what you think is passing grade, it's the same thing as what Al thinks is what I think, and and, you know, I mean, I don't know how we how we make that determination in a way that makes sense.
Well, somehow, some way, we're trying to line in the sand. Like, this is, yeah, we're just going to remember.
Yeah, just have like conversations.
So I I just need help in understanding, so we 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 voted to have the school committees all address this. What number reading is this considered? Okay, so it's by the.
Didn't come out of the second, so it's the first.
Okay. All right, so we have a first reading for this. Sounds like we can make edits if needed for the. Second reading, which we'll do.
I don't, I don't have, I don't have anything on the table, it's gonna possibly make an edit for a second, but I think once we get to the second reading, if there's edits. I haven't heard anything on the screen that says, so I should make an edit.
And there's a deadline around having this.
Seven thirty first is gonna get uploaded. Yes, we have a deadline on seven thirty first.
So.
Actually, I'm gonna make a motion that we define a passing grade as a sixteen to one.
Just for this purpose or passing grade for all?
Very.
All subjects.
Sixty-four, which is a D.
Again, for competency.
The graduation for the.
Or for all of it.
Or what's in the policy. Or in the, yeah.
Should, good. So should we have separate passing grades based? On what they.
I'll second it for discussion.
Can I just? Were you allowed to make motion, vote, change the passing?
There wasn't a motion for the for the policy. We so we voted, right, we voted.
But you made a motion to change the passing rate to sixty-four, is that, when we do as a. A motion to change something, that was not going for a.
I just did.
Besides, but it's not as a. Doesn't seem right, who's the Sarah?
I made a motion.
All right, so a motion made by Jen, seconded by Kate. Yeah, uh, discussion. I'm I'm confused, I'm a little worried that. Yeah, we're doing something very quickly around a passing grade that seems to be a pretty important thing in our educational system, and it seems like. The motion, if I understand it correctly, Jen, is it's just for the competency is sixty-four, but you can get a six, so it's a pet, that's how we're defining passing grade in all. All grades in our school district.
Well, it doesn't. Well, it doesn't, that, that actual definition doesn't exist anywhere. Uh, that I can find. Other than. Uh, this one line that says, um. Credits are awarded only if the final course grade is an A, B, C, D, or P test. Now. Same time, a D is a sixty four to a sixty six. Now, do you say? That it's all the way down to D minus, but it doesn't actually say that.
Just like it doesn't have B minus or B plus. It's, it's within the cat, the letter cat. Okay, but it says, so. There might be some, um.
I don't want to say confusion, but it's not cleared. That's the case, that's not.
That's why I'm a little concerned about a motion to do this, that there is.
That's why I made it because based on what I'm reading in the.
What? Okay, and we're still in the discussion, right?
Yes.
So if we make them, the committee makes a motion and we agreed to change the passing grade to sixty four right here on the spot. That will affect.
Well, it's defining the D, yes.
I know, I'm just saying it's gonna affect eligibility for sports. It's gonna affect, um.
Well, it can be going forward when this gets implemented.
You, that was a motion.
We talked so much about the importance of.
I'm just trying to like.
Oh, I know.
Just trying to say, wh- what are we saying here as a school district in terms of?
And I, and I get that. I just think, I think we need to, and I don't just, I don't, I just want to hear a lot of, I don't necessarily disagree that I think we should be playful about it so that, because all, there's a lot of trickle down stuff. Just making a. A decision like that. I think the motion's there. We can have that discussion, but. I would just caution the committee to make sure. When we're making a decision like that, it's a, it's a much bigger decision. We'll just say this table without having any input from educators.
This is a really significant educational decision that shouldn't be made, you know? When it was. Not something that we had input from our administrators on, so. Yes, but. Changing this for the full. District beyond just the issue of the competency policy is a much bigger discussion that should, if we're going to have it. You know, really should be coming from our administrators, should be driven by data. And we need to be really thoughtful about the ramifications for all of our students if we start making changes like that.
I absolutely agree. I can't just make the four of us.
I, and I didn't want, I made my concerns in the last two subcommittee meetings clear. And, and honestly, I made it clear at the first subcommittee meeting and then. You guys came back with the same recommendation. So it felt like my, you know, and clearly it didn't come out of committee. I felt like it wasn't. And I'm only one person, so I certainly could be and likely will be voted, voted out. Um, I mean, maybe what we could do is we could go forward with the competency determination as it's right, because that is what it is. And it's just that the issue is around what is the passing grade? What I'm unsure of is how we go forward under what. Uh. Process to be looking at this. But, because it's not. It's not a policy. Maybe we can, but I guess we could consider this.
So can I make a suggestion that we go forward? Put down the path for approving the competency determination policy as written. And we ask for John and Julia to come back in January with. Some reporting to us on how other districts that we compare ourselves to. What are their grade scales looking like? What do they award credit for? And if we were to make a change, how is that going to impact our students? How many students do we have?
Or when?
Now, right, but like if you look at what a grade, what does grade distribution look like, like right now? And as students, how many students do we have? Who are getting D minuses, who wouldn't be earning credit anymore for? If, you know, I understand not that it would operationalize for those students, but it's a data point of, you know, this would impact X number of students.
I've asked that in the past and it's very relevant to that. So is that something you can?
Yeah, I mean.
To talk about, you know. Students' grades and, you know, I've always been gotten pushback and things like that.
Yeah, I think, I think it's more on, um, the number so low. The number of kids are so low. I just, I get nervous about how, how, whatever, but. I don't disagree that we should have a conversation. I think having a conversation of plan points over forward and coming up at a point in time where if. If the committee and if the educators and whatever feel that the. It needs to, your passive rate is to be, say, let's go with the six, or sixty four. Then great, we could do that. We need to do a plan at a point in time where it's not gonna, you know, be a start by people understand before they just all, oh my gosh, you know, like now, like now the rules change. That's, that's.
So we have, we have a motion.
Hang on a second. Do you think that's something that always thinks of me? Think around or have it come back?
I think it should come back to the.
Okay, so I'm gonna amend my motion to. Say that we will approve policy I K. I K F. For the first meeting. Uh, and we will have the. Sup, superintendent and assistant superintendent back to a meeting in January with an agenda item to discuss. Right, yeah. What a good passing grade. Or great, I don't want that, I don't want to discuss the rating. Great. How's that?
So you're approving for a second, I'm just trying to.
So I amended my motion.
Right, but.
Just basically what Kate just said.
Okay, and so we're proving this as a policy, that it's a fully approved policy, not just a meeting? Where do we have to go?
To read.
Okay. I'm concerned about what do we do by the end is we won't have, we only have one more meeting before the end of December. So do we have to have three readings before it's officially?
Unless.
A policy?
Unless the committee votes to waive the three readings and to put the policy on for a vote at the second reading at our next meeting.
Let's maybe address first, let's address, let's, yeah, so Jen made a motion. Um, wait a second.
Second.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Yeah, the motion passes four zero.
So then, given that we only have one more meeting on the calendar. I would like to make a motion that we waive the third reading and put the competency determining policy on the agenda for the eighteenth. For, for.
Second.
Second, the only thing I will mention is. We do have another policy. So we would do.
We do a second reading.
The second reading that morning, so, okay.
I think, I think you're right, because I have the fourth reading here, second reading there.
The third reading has to be.
If, if you're not going with this.
Okay, I mean, either way.
We'll have it on the.
I guess we can list it on both agendas and then if something happens.
You have a motion. Although what I like about this motion is it gets us to the same place quicker unless we think there's continued edits, right? So. Yeah, what happens if we don't have a farm, you know, so to me.
You don't have a.
That's, or you could, you can read, right?
If something happens in the policy sub.
So.
Yeah.
Right.
The policy subcommittee can't meet that morning.
So we do have a motion, um. From Kate, seconded by you Jen, around. Approving the policy to, yeah, um, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? Okay, the motion passes four zero.
But we will.
But we will have follow up, yes, let me do this, yes.
Yes. Thank you for your willingness then.
Okay.
But, um.
Around the age.
Yeah, also. Okay, um. So, uh, I believe, um. My notes real quickly. Uh, John, it says it, the January. Eighth meeting.
You're not able. Oh, I am unable to make the January eighth meeting because of a personal issue.
January eighteen, January.
January eighth, sorry, January eighth. And I know that I'm also not available at that meeting. So of course we can continue to have that meeting with designated folks. Or we could, or if the, the will of the committee is to look at moving, uh, meetings to accommodate.
I would like to suggest that we, we were meeting on the second and fourth Thursdays of January because. Remember today is the Thursday. So I would like to suggest that we be on the fifteenth and the twenty nine instead. It seems to me. Not a great use of everyone's time to hold a school committee meeting without the chair or the superintendent. So that would be my suggestion that we look at schedule change.
And then we just have a quick meeting then in February.
We have like a back to back.
Right.
But. You know, it's a busy time of year. I'm sure that we'll have.
And I think not to, not to throw a wrench into the other, the other conversation could be, can we just skip the eighteen, keep the current or whatever. The twenty second. Journey, but that's, that means we go off some month between stuff.
And we have. There's a deadline, I believe, the end of January to approve warrant articles. I'm just concerned that there's. Uh, too many things that we need to be doing.
No, that's fine.
Was that, was that a suggestion or a motion? I'm sorry.
I can turn it in.
I don't think, but.
Okay.
All for, yeah.
All right, so we're all in agreement that we'll change the January eighth meeting to the fifteenth and the twenty second meeting to the twenty ninth.
I do think we should probably determine whether. Or June, we know that.
I thought it was more than twenty nine.
Or, yeah. Was it on the calendar that we had? Yep, uh, warrant article discussion is, I'm looking at January eighth, yeah.
Maybe what to do.
And there was a statement, there was a statement from the moderator.
I guess we can still remember. We can find that out. I just. It, it's possible.
Warrant hearing is April sixth. Uh, you look for the date that it needs to be put on the warrant?
No, that, yeah, the Slipwood gives a cutoff. It's usually the end of sometimes.
They need to print the books in advance, right? That's.
Um. Yeah.
We don't have that. We just have the override warrant article discussion. And then the town meeting.
I just saying, let's just double check. Let's leave the fifteenth and twentieth, but for some reason it's earlier than the twenty ninth. We just need to make sure.
Your Jonathan Hatcher's statement, the deadline from municipal submissions is noon on Friday, January thirtieth.
Okay. Right, I do think you should have it on the, you should have.
I'm adding it to my calendar right now.
Whatever warrant articles we made.
So again, okay, then with the fifteenth and the twenty ninth.
Yeah, and that gets us to the twenty ninth. If there's any change or we need to add one, and then it's due the. Note itself, it's due the next day. So. I think actually two of them.
Good. All right, uh, we'll move on to subcommittee and liaison updates. I just want to add something quickly from a Meiko perspective, um. It was a fantastic meeting. John rightfully stole all the thunder, um. But I, I just want to mention that Meiko as a whole does an annual gala meeting. Um, and this year it's March twenty fourth. I believe the, it's the opportunity ball or something like that is the theme, but I'm just letting people know if they're interested to let me know. I can get you more information, but I think early bird tickets are on sale right.
Is it a fundraiser?
It's a fundraiser for me, though, yes. So I just want to let people know about that.
Yeah, I'm going to the Meiko conference tomorrow, tomorrow in New York, but um, and if there's anything comes out of that for, for, for example, there is a bunch of speakers, the, the president, the lead president speaking with the state commissioner, so. So I'll bring some of that back to the committee, but if there's something that's finally all, all in, that's just.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other updates?
I've got an update from the facilities, subcommittee. I, I don't know if we want to add it to our next agenda, still have more discussion around it, but we did. We did get the results of the survey that Lisa Marie sent out about early education and demand for that. We got. Um, the, the, actually the presentation that she gave us in the drive. So that has all the information if you want to review it. Um, but. We got seventy five responses, I think, and most of them were sort of. Positively interested in. Early education options. Um, I think it's a little tough to make. A decision with. On such a small data pool, um. Particularly because we didn't really come out with a proposal, so. What do you think of? A broad range of people are saying things, but. Can't put kids in there. There's more. Wasn't. Um, so we were going to. Come up with more of a plan. Um, and more of a concrete proposal to get some more feedback. Uh.
It's probably also important to know that. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but a majority of, so, so majority of the people that responded. Supportive of an early education center. There was a very small minority who were strongly against it.
Yeah, it was small.
Of the folks who were in support of early education center really did see, just based on, well, based on the survey and based on. Comments, um, that this really is a there for. Childcare, like a seven to seven, you know, like an extended day, not. Just a typical preschool, you know, morning, afternoon. So that, that. Was clear.
Yeah, that was definitely the strongest response.
Right.
Um, so we'll have a. Uh, the other thing that we talked about it was the vet school roof, which is. Being looked at by the administration. We had Mark Leibman. Coming, and what was that? He got up on the roof or was planning on getting up on the roofs to get it as well. Um, I'm updating from the communications subcommittee really quickly. We are planning on sending out newsletters. We're sort of shooting for the second Friday of every month, so sort of in between our two meetings. Um, Stephen did set us, set up an account on our, on the school account, so I'll. I'll take for that separately. Um, and we've. Added a section for sort of featured stories. The first one that we're gonna do is the budget roadmap. That's timely and then it's just beginning this meeting that. When we get more information on the enrollment numbers, that may be a good topic. So if anybody has any topics that they think are worth communicating. A little more in depth than just an overview of what we talked about in this meeting, please reach out to Alyssa Dolly.
Thanks, Henry. Anybody else?
Well, budget subcommittee, um, Mike kind of gave the highlights on that. I do think we need to make sure we share the calendar. We have it already. We did, so we'll share the calendar, um, and just get the dates on. Uh.
I will drop it, I'll drop it right now in tonight's folder.
Thank you, appreciate that. Yeah, so that way the public has to, so it shows that, um, there are a bunch of days that are coming up, but the important ones will be the presentation of the vet superintendent. To the school committee, then we will have a public hearing at a future meeting and then we will vote at a future meeting from that, um, on our budget, all of it. Will take place for the finance committee votes on their recommended. Um, budget for us, hopefully, but you know, those two numbers will be the same. Um, so that's it.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, um.
So any of the policies? No, we really didn't. We covered the waterfront on policy tonight.
All right, uh, is there any correspondence? Okay, I am then looking for a motion and vote to meet an executive session for the following reasons. Uh, pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, eighty three, purpose three, to discuss potential litigation by former administrator Jay Buckley and Bucking, excuse me. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee and the chair, so declares. Without intent to return to open session. Also executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, eighty two, purpose two, to conduct collective bargaining session with Marblehead Education Association. Specifically to hear step three grievance regarding the lead teacher stipend as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee. And the chairs will declare without intent to return to open session. And, uh, pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, eighty three, purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Specifically to deliberate regarding your response to the step three grievance. Regarding the lead teacher stipend as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of a school committee. And the chair so declares without intent to return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion is moved by Kate and seconded by Henry. Um. We'll do a roll call on this.
And?
In favor.
Kate?
In favor.
Henry?
Favor.
Al in favor, the motion passes over to zero. So now we will go into executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, eighty three, purpose three, to discuss potential litigation by. Former administrator Jay Bucking is an open meeting may have a detrimental effect. On the litigating position of the school committee and the chair so declares without intent to return to possession. Executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, eighty two, purpose two, to conduct a collective bargaining session. With Marblehead Education Association specifically to hear step three grievance regarding the lead teacher stipend. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee. And the chair so declares without intent to return to open session. Lastly, executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, eighty three, purpose three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining specifically to deliberate. Regarding a response to the step three grievance regarding the lead teachers stipend as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect. On the litigating position of the school committee and the chair so declares without intent to return to open session. Okay, we are now in executive session. We'll meet in this meeting in the. Okay, we are now in executive session. We'll be in this meeting in this, we're right here.